Okay, welcome. Let's jump right in. Item one of the work session. Discussion of a change of zoning from R1 to R119 for property owned by Earl Underwood at 350 South Woodlands Drive, serial number 5552004, consisting of 5.7861 acres. Is there Nate Carson or someone representing?
He was trying to come.
Okay, well, we can probably come back to it later if he turns up unless Wayne, do you have anything to inform the decision? Let's do that. It's probably better to give him a chance to speak himself. Okay, well, you have to come up anyway because you're item two, outdoor lighting ordinance.
Sherry Berger, who's here tonight and others of the PTR committee put together a semblance of a new lighting ordinance for the city. It basically tweaks our existing ordinance and we really haven't updated it since the onslaught of LED lighting and things and wattages different from LED to incandescent things. So our ordinance does require some updating. As I'm looking at it, I wondered if this was a forebear of interest in a dark skies ordinance because there would need to be a lot more done to it if it were. I've seen some dark sky ordinances that are 13 pages long. And I felt it was best to the council to have a discussion about whether that was something that the city wanted to go forward with or not in order to give some guidance as to updated lighting ordinance. As I circulated that, and I believe you all got copies of Sherry's email as well that had the lighting ordinance on it. So I felt it would be a good thing for the council to have a discussion. And there's been talk about it for some time, pros and cons to it. I know some of you have done a little bit of research on it as well. And so I felt it was appropriate for an organization to have some discussion about it, about having a dark skies ordinance. And it would help then set the tone for lighting ordinance and any other ordinances that the city felt needed to be done in furtherance of a dark skies ordinance. Should that be the decision of the council to go forward with that? I know there's a difference of opinions about different aspects of dark skies. There's, I think there's general interest in the city trying to preserve our night skies for observation and whatnot. Whether we need an ordinance to do that is another question. Personally, I don't think there is a need to do that. We can have dark skies limited and try to have some limits on our lights to enjoy the night skies without having an ordinance.
But I have a neighbor that has a spotlight that shines right into one of our windows. And when we've had the Northern Lights Aurora Borealis, I've had to, because we're friends. And so I'll text her and I'll say, hey, can you turn that spotlight off? I'm trying to see the Northern Lights tonight. But you know, her light just drowns it out. So it would be nice for me to be able...
Oh, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, but just it would be nice to be able to say, hey, you know, can you aim that down and not point it at my house? It's the ordinance.
Did she do that?
She turned it off, but she didn't, but I mean, turned it right back on after, right?
But would that be covered under our current ordinance? Would that be prohibited under our current lighting ordinance?
Yes, to some degree.
People would be grandfathered, right? I mean...
Well, there's some question about that.
Not necessarily.
Because I interrupted you.
No, no, go ahead.
I don't know that we want to go, Brian and I talked about it. I don't know that we want to go full dark skies because there's some negatives to that. But I would like to see some changes to our lighting ordinance and maybe do like night skies, you know, where we're not, where we just have, where we want to preserve the night sky, but we're not necessarily trying to get the designation. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Where it's a compromise.
There's a difference of opinion, but there is a state requirement that cities cannot dictate architecturally, if we're here, let me share it with yourself, exterior non-structural architectural ornamentation.
Unless it's a PUD or a development agreement, then you can.
That's not a city though.
But if it's just one, if it's just a one-off thing, you can't, or if there's an HOA. So if there's a development agreement, a PUD or an HOA, there can be restrictions. But if it's just one person building here and there, you can't have any...
And another thing we can't dictate is rear yard landscaping requirements. So if somebody has a spotlight in their backyard, that becomes problematic in the enforcement then, as the state has set forth these standards for what we can and what we cannot do. So most of the time anyway, it's going to be cooperation. It's going to be working together to do some of these things. It's not going to be an ordinance that is requiring somebody to do something, I don't think.
So how would you characterize our current ordinance in terms of how it restricts lighting? I mean, is it, does it lend itself to preserving night skies as it's currently written? I mean, it might not be as exacting as a dark skies ordinance, but what, could you sum it up as to what it...
Well, there's a limit at 75 watts. But the issue becomes then is how that is displayed by the home, the homeowner.
And that's where it would potentially be tightened up by the...
Correct. So there's a security issue. The city is kind of exempt from these standards because of security issues. But a lot of homes would want that same allowance. Somebody's coming home late at night from shift work, going by the, picking up mail and coming home and parking their car outside, they may not want to do that in complete darkness. They may want lights on. And there is a suggestion that we ought to maybe have a purview for lights.
Or motion.
Motion. No, motion sensors is different than I think in all night light.
Well, that's positive.
Yeah.
And some people have architectural homes that they want to display at night. The lights on it are very attractive to the home. And I know a lot of homes that leave the lights on all night long because of that feature. So you had a question, Doral?
Did our committee with Kirsten that's doing community...
I was just going to look up that.
Aren't they, didn't they consider this at all?
Yeah, they did consider it and decided not to put in Dark Sky International. They, I was trying to look up the exact word because we just changed it.
Tonight.
And it's more, they don't even put the word night sky. But that's the, after looking over all of the data that they received, talking with all of the city staff and other people in the community, they felt like Dark Sky International per se was too harsh of an ordinance for our city. But they liked the idea of part of our quality of life is the night sky, which is the idea that we don't have streetlights, we don't have lights on all night. Maybe considering the motion lights at night, no problem, right? Maybe just not having your jelly lights flashing around, red, white and blue, at 2:00 in the morning. And so, you know, things like that. Can we be reasonable and self-governed in that choice to respect your neighbors and to say, our ordinance says, we appreciate our aesthetics of our, and the ominous of our city, and yet be reasonable with maybe having those downcast lights or, you know, we didn't, they didn't go into that in detail in what they said, just more of the idea that our quality of life is, part of that is that we have a night sky type city.
So Wayne, you're looking for direction on what the temperature of the council is, right? And where you take this from here, so...
Wayne, I've done, and hopefully maybe I can answer some questions. I've done a lot of research, not as much as Sherry, but I have done a lot of research. And I think what we're looking at here, and I believe with, Sherry, please correct me if I'm wrong, with our most recent conversation is dark skies and preserving our night skies are kind of two things here. And we're really looking at preserving our night skies at the moment. Now, dark skies could come back in later. Sherry's answered some of the questions, her thoughts on them. Sherry's gotten the ombudsman's, what I read as an informal thought rather than a actual legal opinion from the state ombudsman on, you know, the architectural, non-structural architectural comment that you made earlier. Again, I don't believe that that's legal, but we have, one of the things we'd like, we've talked about is actually getting a legal opinion from our attorneys and even going higher if need be, if we decide to pursue that. But right now, I think what we're looking at is more something to preserve our night skies. And unfortunately, I was in Delaware when the came down, but a lot of you guys got to see that. I got the pictures, which we needed a camera to see it really good anyhow. So I appreciate your pictures, Janet. I've been showing those off back in Delaware to everybody.
We, but Sherry and I went, but we had to, we ended up going down the canal road to actually get the best.
To get the best ones.
To get away from the lights.
So I think what we're looking at is preserving, at least at this point, let's, let's look at preserving our night skies because there's a lot of controversy with dark skies. Let's look at, can we preserve our night skies? I, Wayne, I apologize, but I disagree that we shouldn't have a lighting ordinance and that we can, I believe we can, based on the research I've done, have a lighting ordinance that would even handle someone's sports court in their backyard. I believe that's 100% legal for us to do, even though it's, because it's not considered landscaping at that point. It's lighting and lighting has a different view. In my, in my research, you know a lot more about this than I do, but the research I'm showing is lighting is different. And the grandfathering, I think if we're trying to preserve our night sky, we don't want a grandfather. If we're trying to go dark skies, that's one of the questions, Dark Skies International, I send it out to everybody, they say everybody has to comply within a minimum, a maximum of 10 years. And I think that's wrong. I couldn't vote for that. So we're asking dark skies to clarify that. But I think if we're going to do something to preserve our night skies, because that's something the community wants to do, then we should make it overreaching and enforceable. Now, of course, our enforcement, as pretty traditional with us, has been lots and lots of talking, lots and lots of warnings, lots and lots of stuff before we ever get into something more punishing. And I would recommend that, but I don't, being on the legislature side, I don't, I don't handle that side of it. It's the mayor's and mayor elect's side to deal with those kinds of things. But that would be my, my thought process on it. But I do believe that we have the legal right and the research I've done, but I'm happy to learn more and get that, get that corrected. I believe we have the legal right to do it. And I think we, the research I've done with the people that I've talked to, the community wants to preserve those skies. We like being able to see the Milky Way. We like being able to see, when you can, an aurora or the shooting stars or...
The big moon.
Yes, absolutely. I think that's a big fire.
We can't do that now with our existing lights. We have trouble seeing those constellations.
So existing, no. I think there are some places where you run into some problems.
Neither you have.
But for the most part, no. I think, I think most of the city, 90% of the city complies with what we're all thinking would have, what would be that way. But I think that we need to have some direction. I'm going to, even though I don't go to church, I'm going to reference the church, the iron rod, right? It keeps us on the path. It's there to keep us going in the right direction, right? And that's what I think in order, these kinds of ordinances are meant to do is, here's our path, here's the direction we should be going and not just go about and...
But is it a...
Regulating.
Well, and I also think that, so there's a couple of things I just want to comment on what you said. So with respect to, I mean, that might be an enforcement issue. I mean, so our ordinance might accommodate 98% of the objectives that, and so I'm just saying that as an enforcement tool, we would probably be better off trying to enforce what we have unless it is...
Well, it needs updated though, he said.
Yeah, I think there's some things that do need updating in it.
I mean, is that...
With the, with the LED lights that are much less wattage, but are powerful, as is powerful in some instances, there needs to be a, that needs to be included in our lighting ordinance.
Either an equivalent or lumens, lumens is the new measurement that is, that is used.
Tradition too.
Lots.
And but then there's the other thing that I was thinking like to your point, Wayne, if there is like an architectural, if you've invested architecturally in something that includes a lighting element and we suddenly say shut it down, I mean, that's kind of a regulatory taking.
Again, I think some of the, again, with the exception of the late shut, you know, expecting people to shut it off at a certain time, our current ordinance says that you have a certain wattage, right? And we can now compare that, they've got some equivalents to lumens and things like that. And I'm not, I'm not thinking we would actually have to change that part of it. I think our wattages that are currently there, right? Do I think that everybody is complying with the wattages that we have?
No.
I'm quite certain that their people are not with the wattage and comparison of those wattages, right? To do that, the direct comparison.
Would you feel as comfortable as Janet does in going to your neighbor or going down the road and seeing a bright light on to stopping and telling him?
Well, I only asked her to turn it off for 20 minutes.
So I would actually, I wouldn't feel comfortable going to some of my neighbors and asking that.
Okay.
So here's my question, Wayne. You and I talked earlier today about roosters, right? Roosters are in violation of our code due to noise nuisance ordinance, right?
Yes.
So my question is, is in comparison, in association with the dark skies initiative potentially, what constitutes a nuisance, whether it be sound, whether it be light? Because, you know, I'm sitting here thinking of Janet, that light, if it's blasting at her house, right?
It is all night long, every night.
That would be, I would fall more under a nuisance side of things, right? Because you're lighting up my property when I don't want it lit. That's a violation, I would say, of my rights over your preferences. And is that maybe an avenue by which this could be approached? Because I think having lights that shine down minus flags, I'm still adamant about that.
That's all, we can't fix it.
Lighting is gold. I also would personally say that this building here should be able to be lit as well as the mailboxes, right? Motion sensors, I'm looking at this from a safety standpoint. Here, I'm thinking of safety as emergency responders coming in the middle of the night.
And Jody leaving late.
Jumping in, well, we're going to try and hopefully make Jody go home on time. But really what I'm looking at also though is with a motion light, you just have to not have motion. Somebody could crouch and hide within the mailboxes and waiting for somebody with a motion light which is on all the time light, it's a much harder feat to hide. So I'm looking at that from the safety standpoint in a public space. But I'm thinking, what about that nuisance side, having lights that shine down, not blasting into your neighbor's yard, something more along those lines.
There is a requirement to have lighting in such a way that it does not affect your neighbor.
Can I read it to you? It's in our current ordinance. It says, "The lighting element itself is not visible outside of the law that is on." It isn't so much the brightness guide, it's that the light isn't shielded.
Okay.
And to your point, there are some cities that have it written into their nuisance ordinance, you know, sound and lighting as a nuisance ordinance. And so there are some limitations that some cities have done. I found the reference in our, the committee's document that they've just handed over to the planning commission. It's under goal one, which is maintain and enhance our rural mountain community feel. Under D, it says reinforce rural identity by limiting light pollution. So they kept it real broad on how, what that means. But I think that as what everyone else has said, the intent seems to be that we maintain our night sky without infract, interfering on our neighbors' ability to see the night sky. But also we want to make sure that we have safety provisions, especially for public spaces. And then maybe those security lights, et cetera. I think it makes a big difference.
Does that sum up everybody's thoughts generally?
No.
Okay. Almost everybody's.
I just counted like 28 dark skies places in Utah. If we're not a dark skies place, there's something wrong. So I would wonder if Sherry and I took signatures, would that have any weight on the city changing their minds to go dark skies?
Do Dark Sky International actually?
Well...
Is there some pretty strict...
Whatever Moab did, I want to do it. Whatever that is. That is, now there's something that every, every one of us in our discussions have actually said, everybody has said to me, we don't want to punish anybody who's already here. They want to be dark skies. I, with the right, with the right write-up, we could get signatures, in my opinion.
I think you'd get a lot of compliance just by having an initiative and saying, we passed it.
So why not try? I mean, I don't want to drop this after two years of this.
Too, I think, I think the difference is too on this, Doral, is it's like, like I said to the committee, it's, it's what we are, as we were discussing, it's like Kleenex and tissue. You know, you always say, give me a Kleenex when you don't really care what brand it is, you just need a tissue. So dark skies, when people hear the word dark skies, it's the same...
I don't care what you call it.
Okay.
And if we're not, we're silly. I mean, that's...
There is a lot of...
We, I don't care what it takes. If Moab can do it, we ought to be able to do it.
Well, I think that to your point, Doral, if you can get a petition signed, I mean, I think that would carry weight in terms of the legislative bodies, you know, outlook on it. But I don't think it, it's not going to have like a ballot initiative sort of way.
Right, no, no, I mean, it would just put, put a different, maybe a feeling in the council.
And I like, I like Brian's approach, maybe it's a two-step approach.
Yeah, let's start with a little bit.
Start with a little bit with the night sky and then maybe we work up to the dark sky designation and see what the community's temperature is for. I know, but I'm just saying maybe that, maybe we break everybody in.
I don't think it's a bad thing. And I think if we identify everything that is currently in the city and talk to those people who are not in compliance, because they're going to have to become, come into compliance, they're going to have to, we're going to force it because that's what our legislation is going to say. That's the only way dark skies is going to let it go, based on my research.
Did you, when you did a little survey or talking to people in the city, were they aware that potentially they're going to, they'd have to change all their lights, outside lights on their home in order to comply?
I didn't tell every, I didn't tell everybody that I've talked to that.
That's the fine print, huh?
That is, there's the, this is where you get a signature and you don't tell them that they're going to have to change their lights on their house and they're going to be forced to pay for it? You buy new bulbs.
So I just looked up Moab's and they, their community, they're, they're, they decided to, their aim is to reduce light pollution, glare and, and sky glow through updated outdoor lighting standards. They adopted it in 2019, but it didn't take effect until 2024. So they gave everybody five years, encourages responsible downward facing lighting for safety while protecting the night sky and local ecosystems. So it did include businesses and residents to make their outdoor lighting compliant with new standards to minimize the light trespass and waste is what they call it. And so, yeah, there's certain things that downward facing lighting, directing, shielding.
I'm all for all that stuff, but I'm not all for telling...
They have an exception for holiday lighting.
Doral, when have you been here?
25 years.
25 years. I'm not willing to tell someone who's been here 25 years that they're going to have to pay to change their lights.
There's a lot of loaded words in what you just tried to carry.
It's not that hard. They don't care about everybody in there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is that we've got to be careful.
They care about getting that, they care about getting that designation so they get the tourists.
Okay, well, I mean, we obviously, we're not going to solve this tonight, but I think that as far as your objective here, Wayne, I don't know, did you get some direction that you could come back with either a proposed amendment to the existing ordinance or something that the council can debate?
Do you want to raise a hand?
But then I think that, Doral, to your point, I mean, well, if you can do it in the next six weeks.
I'll be a citizen when you go crazy.
Yeah, that's right. You'll wield way more power.
I got you a PTR member.
I mean, we can change, we can tweak the lighting ordinance without any real issues or problems to do that. We have people who don't want to buy the setbacks. And when you start, I'm just talking about reality, when you start telling them that they've got to change their lights out in five years, or a new builder comes in, has this beautiful home and he's got these lights he wants to keep on all night long and they shine off the wall, they're not, they're probably not affecting their neighbor. We're already accused oftentimes of being over-regulating. And, and the state continues to clamp down on us in that regard. There's a list here of probably 20 things that we can't do anymore when we ask for a building permit for a person. We can't dictate that anymore. It's up to those people.
Park City.
And Google does disagree with you, Brian, on lights, by the way, as, as an architectural feature. They call them, when you Google it, they call lighting ornamentation, it's an architectural, structural, non-structural architectural feature. So there's differences of opinion on those things.
Which gives the lawyers room to dance.
Which gives the lawyers, exactly. And I don't believe the ombudsman's comments were illegal. It was his comment.
So there's, there's wishes and there's reality that we need to look at. And I, I'm probably somewhere in the middle with, I've, I've often advocated a little bit, why can't we be a dark skies community without being a dark skies community, without having to go through the whole process, be under the, under their direction as far as what we can or what we cannot do? Let's see how much progress we can make ourselves and by enhancing the night skies and making it a thing for not have to go down to the canal and look up and see the lights, but have those available in our city. So...
Because you have people like Dan Lunt who are like, are going to say, nobody's going to tell me what to do, I'll do whatever I want.
Well, yes.
I don't have much control.
So that's, that's something, if, if we do more research on it, I would like to have you all include the whole package with people. I mean, we got survey results that showed that a good portion of those surveyed, 213, did like the idea of having dark skies. And so, however, that was only 14% of the city in the survey, who participated in that. So as we look to go forward with, with maybe more, as you talk to constituents, give them the full, the full story and see if we still get, yeah, that's okay, I'll change all my lights, outside lights.
And what I'm trying to avoid is giving the wrong story. So I'm trying to get the information from dark skies, that's why I requested the information from Sherry and the PTR, so we can get that from dark skies so we can share the true story. Because I could be building something in my head that's not there and they could say, no, this isn't the case anymore, you're reading the wrong, you're reading the wrong, you know, papers, this is old or not. Maybe they're even stricter than I, than I'm making up in my head. So that's what I'm, I'm trying to get that so that we can actually share the true story. But I think a lighting ordinance is not, a, a, a better or a more restrictive lighting ordinance for our, for our night skies is, is not a bad thing. I'm for it.
Okay.
Just, just to give my opinion.
If you're, you're going to ask me to draft it mostly, which I don't mind doing, I have a different view of things than you all do. I, I don't think, I, again, I think the exterior non-structural architectural... I, I don't think, I, again, I think the exterior non-structural architectural orientation includes lights. So, so I wouldn't dictate, you can only have these kind of lights in your home, on the outside.
So at that point, I'm going to ask the council and mayor.
And you can change.
Can we get a legal opinion? Can we bring this to our attorneys? I hate spending the money, but can we bring this to the attorneys? And have them figure out, is lighting a non-structural architectural ornamentation as referred to in code? And I can get you the code.
Yeah.
Wayne, got it. I mean, I, I think that it would probably be ideal to have at least a skeletal uh, type of an ordinance. I mean, if we just go with sort, I mean, the devil will be in the details. And so if we just go to them with sort of vague questions, we'll get vague answers. So.
Can we say?
But at some point, we should.
Want to talk to a dark sky community like helper? Can we?
Yeah, I mean, it's clearly been done.
There's all kinds of examples. You don't need an attorney. I just. But I, I would vote against it based on ones that I've seen. Because I'm not going to force somebody who's been here for twenty-five years to change their lights. I'm not going to do it. I, I have too much respect for their rights. I'm okay if they want to, but I'm not going to force them to, is what I'm saying.
We're not there yet.
Yes, we are. If you want to go to a dark sky community, we are absolutely there.
All right. Well, let, let, why don't we do this? So is the majority of the council in favor of pursuing? Either, I would say the options are an amended current ordinance, a night sky objective ordinance, or a full-on dark sky ordinance. And that way at least you can have some direction as to those three options. So let's start with current ordinance amended. By show of hands.
I want, well, I want night sky.
Okay.
Yeah, I want night sky. amended to be night sky.
Okay. Yeah. No, that's option B. So option B would be more of a directive toward night skies. Is that what? The numbers generally support?
Night sky.
Night sky.
And then you want to take it one step further and go full-on dark sky.
I'm getting happy every moment.
All right.
I think we were all, I think we were all on board for night sky before we walked in the door. I think that we're concerned more with the, the stipulations when you go with an outside, um, organization that dictates what you can do.
That's my hesitation.
Because of, because of Wayne's objection or his, his thought on this, can we take Sheri's?
You can change that.
I know, I know.
If I come in with something crazy and you say, we don't like that, we want this added. That's your prerogative.
What I'm asking, because I don't want to do that. What I want to do is I want to take something and go to the attorney. And if you send it, it's going to have omitted what we're actually looking for. So can we take Sheri's, you know, recommended from the, from the P, Sheri, I say Sheri, but it's the PTR's recommended lighting ordinance? And send that to the attorney and have him rule on the architectural, or them rule on the architect, or not rule.
Sheri doesn't include architectural stuff in her ordinance.
You don't, you took that one out?
Wayne's objection, that was how to enforce it, that you have to submit an architectural plan for lighting to get your permit. That was how we could have enforced the ordinance rather than going through an.
Yep, I, I get that, but.
So I took that out and I was going to go.
You didn't put shielded in your ordinance at all? Shielded lighting?
I think shield is.
I think shielded is in there and that's what I want to get to the attorney.
Okay. But before we get there, is everybody in agreement with sending Sheri's? I mean, are, is everyone close enough to what Sheri has proposed that that would be a starting point to get a legal opinion on? Or at least is the majority there? So, all right.
Okay. I just want to make sure that you're clear in your, in your words. Architectural lighting is a very specific, narrow piece of lighting. It's not illumination. And I think we, you guys haven't always used the architectural word in your sentences correctly, and it might skew your answer. Cause I, I, brother-in-law's architect. Architectural lighting is specifically done while the architect is working. How will he further accent this piece of art he's created? So just, just so you know, legally, you're going to have differences if your question is.
That's why we want to ask an attorney.
And you want your question to be really clean and not leaning one way or another because you'll misunderstand the answer.
That's why we want to send it to the attorney. That's what I'm saying.
All right.
That's why we're, we're requesting that to go to the attorney.
So I, I think that though, that, that gives you a direction. So you've got the starting ordinance and your misgivings are point taken. Uh, but so I think that if, if the council is largely in favor of moving that one to the next step, then I think that a legal review would be appropriate at that time. And so I would say that's the direction, my misstating the will of the council. Okay?
Okay. Very good.
All right. Thanks.
You bet. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Come on. I guess you don't really need to come on up, but let's, let's keep with some semblance of formality. I mean, heck, haven't had any in four years. May as well start.
Before you're done?
Thank you for the chair.
All right.
Yeah. Very, very, very briefly. The city currently has two ordinances for lighting. One pertains to residential and one.
Sheri, you will not be able to hear you on the mic.
One pertains to residential, which is the one we're looking at amending if we can. And the other one pertains to city-owned property. The one for city-owned property says that the lights have to be off by eleven PM with the exception of being approved by the planning commission. When I asked Wayne about that, I said, did I miss a meeting? Did I miss a public hearing? Cause this would be changing an ordinance. And he said, no, I decided myself. So that's why the lights are on all night long at the city and at the mailbox. That's one thing. For residents, dark sky for me is a great place to begin using their organization. We can educate people. We can have them look at their lighting to see what purpose that lighting is having or shining it in a certain direction. UVU is willing to come in and do a light sample of our city. Won't cost us anything. Um, have to submit an annual review, the city does, if we are dark sky approved. I don't feel that PTR is trying to put a square peg in a round hole to make us dark sky. I think we're almost there. We really are. We're almost there. But we're not enforcing the ordinance that we have, which has to do with shielding. I'm not going to mention anybody in particular, but there are several homes where the lights are so bright at the end of the driveways because there's no shielding. It's dangerous and it's not being enforced.
Yeah. Well, and, and, I mean, there are sensitivities. I mean, I, I think that, you know, not everybody is going, I, I think that we need to have a fairly clear uh, standard that you're either in compliance with or not. And, and some of these, I don't, I mean, you know, you might find them off-putting, but they might be legally compliant. And so I do agree that, you know, there's, there's probably a variety of infractions. And new mayor, I'm sure we'll get to the bottom of all of them.
The only tweak that PTR really made to the existing ordinance is no street light to be off by eleven PM, which is in conjunction with the city's ordinance for public property, the city-owned property. And so many lumens per acre. Those are the only differences. Otherwise the ordinance stays the same in Bali. I thought, I thought to myself the other day, because I'm going to Scotland tomorrow.
Oh, wonderful time.
Thank you. So I've been thinking a lot about William Wallace. When he died, his last word was freedom. Mine's going to be dark sky.
At the expense of freedom.
Grant.
Mayor, mayor.
We're not, we're not trying to take anything away from people. We're just trying to preserve what we have. And I think the no street lights and the amended ordinance that PTR sent to Wayne, there's nothing in city code right now that says we can't have street lights.
I'm sorry, there is. It's an element of construction standards that lighting will be underground and no street lights.
Okay. Well, and, and, and we, let's, no.
I'm twisting.
Yeah, I, I think that's fair.
Back and forth.
Yeah, no, let's not do that.
A little bit.
Now, you're, you're, thanks for the input and, uh, thanks.
Happy to talk about it anytime.
All right. Okay, uh, are, are, one of you, Nate Carson?
I actually don't represent any, no.
Okay, speaking on behalf of Nate Carson, we, uh, jumped ahead. And so if you'd like to come up and discuss your proposal, we waited for you.
Thank you.
No, glad, glad to have you here.
Um, yeah, so our proposal is, um, under the blessing. Oh, Kate and Cole. Sorry, I'm not Nate Carson. Kate and Cole with the developer. Um, the Underwoods have given the blessing and we've met with them multiple times on site. Um, and they want to join, uh, the Havenwood, uh, project that we are manning. And, um, so in, in those efforts, we're requesting a zone change from R one to R one nineteen um, to integrate the Underwood property into what we have as Havenwood, which is the old Garrick's house. So that's essentially what we're trying to do. It's nicer because instead of wrapping the road so tightly. Um, sorry.
So you're, so what you're saying is that, um, the development that we approved a few years ago is.
A few weeks ago.
I know, the new one, if he's representing the new one, but they've added in the one that we talked about years ago, a few years ago, is now being added to this. Yeah. Right. Yeah, we only did the zone change. So you're just adding the two together into one.
Correct. Correct. Instead of, instead of looping the whole road within our property, it goes through both properties and makes all the lots. Roughly three quarters acre to an acre. So there's fourteen, there's fourteen, fourteen lots now.
And smallest one is what?
It's point seven.
Point six two.
Point six two, sorry.
A little less than three quarters.
Lot number four.
Yeah.
Wasn't it larger?
No, it says point eight two.
Is that eight?
We haven't changed.
My apologies.
Yeah, we haven't changed any of our, any of our lot sizes on our side.
Actually, I think we've made it bigger because we don't have a road now.
We don't have that.
Yeah, they do look bigger. So.
Yeah, they're all three quarters or more.
So point seven seven looks like the smallest one.
Seven four.
Seven four. Thirteen is seven four.
Okay. Oh, yep, there it is.
Any questions?
Um, I do have one question. Um, I know you had a conversation with, with our recorder earlier today, maybe not one of you, but we do have.
A water line?
A water line.
Yes.
Running through the already approved section.
I mean, we just found that out.
We just barely found it.
Yes, we're, uh, we're finding that out too. Well. Um, and so I wonder, what is the thoughts there on the discussion around potentially that, you know, maybe we need to slightly tweak it, move it, adjust it, whatever needs to happen there.
Water line?
To assist. So it's.
Yeah, we haven't even seen where it is.
Oh, you haven't yet?
No.
Not, we were going to.
Yeah, we.
A little early.
We, we've actually.
We know that the, the area is it, but we don't know exactly.
We were going to get to Ted.
Yeah.
Perfect. It basically runs almost, depending on where exactly in this road, it's right about here.
Okay. So we may have to adjust the lot line.
Okay.
Or.
Or we need to shift, but you guys are amenable to that conversation.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the extent of my conversation. And either my question is, I just want to make sure that we can get that squared way because, you know, I hate to have you have you guys put a foundation on lot five and hit the water.
Well, I'm glad I dug the test holes. I'm so glad. The water.
The importance, just for your understanding, the importance, and Ted, you can correct me if I'm wrong here. Um, from what Ted was telling me earlier today, this is a, a water pressure line to help regulate our pressures in the city to help make sure we have the fire flows that we need. Is that true, Ted?
Yeah, so moving the water line and I don't know the timing of it before my time. It's looping, it loops the water line to increase the flow, the fire flows and stuff like that. They were having flow issues down there. Whether.
So.
We were going to get, yeah. So today we're trying to figure out how it's in there with easement and lot lines and trying to, we're, so we're addressing that.
Thank you.
Carrie?
Yes, um, one of the things that we've been doing as a city has been upgrading our, um, or updating, I should say, our general plan. And we've also been doing a trail, uh, study on a trail up Widen Hills Drive. And at this point, it's on, um, the mag map as well as the governor's, uh, trail network map. To come up Widen Hills Drive, right on the side of this property.
Okay.
There is a portion of that that, um, because when they originally put Widen Hills Drive in, they didn't necessarily center it on the easements. It just went where it was the easiest to go up the road. And so, um, there's a portion of that property that doesn't have a wide enough spot for an easement for that trail. So just wondering if you would consider writing that into, working with Ted and making sure that as you put, change, as you're looking at the water lines, other utilities, that maybe you might consider making that wide enough on that one's top.
And Ted, Ted mentioned that there was some property that may have to be dedicated to the city. So as long as it doesn't majorly affect the lot, we're, we're all.
Yeah. The only I was going to say is that I think, um, in your guys' zone approval, you said that we couldn't go below the lot sizes that we presented. So as long as we can work together, if it shrinks a lot by.
It's a, it's a.
Point oh two acres.
Twelve feet. And I think that some of your spots are a little bit less than twelve feet of the easement of the city's, you know, city-owned re-easement along the road. And so it might need just a few feet. So it's not anything significant, but it is something to consider.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it shouldn't be.
They have brought our attention. So we want to make sure it's applied.
Yeah. Jeremy has the exact, Jeremy Searle has the exact, and so does Ted. Just, just as a transparent thought.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
And this is one reason why we put our subdivision on hold when Mr. Underwood approached us, is that we feel it's best for the city. Not have four roads on.
This is perfect. This is, I like, yeah, do appreciate that. That's.
I think his would be a private drive-in. It'd be, it'll be, it'd be, it's way better how it is. So.
So who's the official builder that's going to be building the homes or are you going to sub?
We don't know yet.
You're going to subdivide them and then sell them?
Sell them individually or, uh, we could.
Or custom home builder. It'd be, it'd be a higher end.
Okay. Because I had a associate come to me and they said, I heard you could, Arrive Homes is going in there.
They, they have made us an offer.
Oh.
We haven't, we haven't committed anything.
Feels like, yeah, I don't, they really don't want that. So I don't.
Okay. Well, thank you, uh, for your time. And, uh, if there are no further questions, uh, and if you have nothing else to present, I think we're good.
I think the only thing to mention would be the intent. It's not to do the zone change, but the intent would be that, that we build our side and the full road. And then Mr. Underwood will do.
His side.
His side when he, uh, he's, he's actually intending, Earl is the dad. Uh, his son, Christian, is intending to build his personal home there. He just doesn't know how he's going to, he might conglomerate three lots and build his house on three lots. So that's how our intent is to actually build the site.
Ed would, or Ted, would that, uh, have issues with any of the bonding or things like that on the road?
No, we've talked about that. We've, I mean, they're going to bond for the entirety.
All right. If you're, if you're, yeah. I appreciate that.
That's great.
Thank you.
Like this much better.
Yeah, that U was really tight. And then the house was an island. I didn't love that. It made the house a little island in the middle of that road. I'm just, I'm just saying, like.
Just give him a pina colada. He has an island.
People might not want to build or to buy an island like that.
All right. Item three, uh, discussion of September twenty twenty-five financials and check dispersments. Chris?
Yes.
Welcome to the line of the living.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, getting through September, there hasn't been too much excitement. Uh, you'll see in October's financials coming up in the next week and a half or two, that, that we did spend a chunk of road monies. But up until September thirtieth, we were eight percent received on our, our revenues on a twenty-five percent year gone by so far. And then fifteen percent spent on our expenses. Um, the auditors are finishing up the audit as we speak right now. So there will be some adjustments. I just want to point out that the state auditors remind all public agencies to, once the adjustments come in from the auditors, to go ahead and restate the financials. Um, and so these financials here that you're looking at or that you receive will be restated. There'll be some changes that just come with depreciation and some of the other things that the auditors typically do. And then, um, also our transparency for the public, uh, that will be updated also by, within fifteen to thirty days of receiving the audit and the adjustments there. Any questions on the financials so far? I did, I did receive some questions from staff that I'll be getting to in the next couple of days. I don't know who was CC'd on that email, but I can let everybody know on that too.
Okay. With there being no questions, uh, since you're up and, uh, your voice is clear, you want to just jump down to the, uh, URS discussion?
Happy to. So, um, about every three to four years, the Utah retirement systems, which is the retirement plan that a lot of the public agencies participate in the state of Utah, they come and do a comprehensive audit. And so this year they did do a, it was our turn to go through the. And so this year they did do a, it was our turn to go through the audit and they did an audit. Great people to work with. Being part of Utah Retirement Systems, just for everybody to know is once we're part of the retirement systems, you can't get off it. That's by state statute. So we did, I think we joined about two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight, and this is the, the path that was chosen for. Retirement for the city. We did learn that with this past audit that if we have employees that have been on Utah Retirement Systems with another employer, or interesting enough, two contractors that may come in and do work for the city of Within Hills, that we need to report that to Utah Retirement Systems. And so we do have, we've had an employee and have an employee that was formerly on Utah Retirement Systems. We do. Have to report it on Utah Retirement Systems and also because of the hours worked, have to pay Utah Retirement Systems benefits. I'm just gonna call them URS, URS benefits. For this employee. This was something new that we had not known before. So in doing this audit, they did come back and there was several thousand dollars that were owed in past contributions. And so the, the city had to, we've, we've had to pay those. This was not in the budget. We will need to open the budget and move some things around. But wanted to bring that up to the council's attention. And also, I, Mayor, I don't know, we want to talk about anything else with the payroll aspects of it or not.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that it's worth, I mean, is there, I mean, I, I would just assume name this person unless you think I shouldn't. I mean, I, there's not that many people, so it's a, you know, you got a one in five chance of guessing it right if you just throw a dart. But it's, it's Lori, and, and she actually came to me and said that she wanted to take a pay cut because of this new revelation. And to me, it's like, well, I know that that was taken into consideration when we initially hired Lori, and, and by we, I, I mean my predecessor. But I, I believe that her compensation was figured off, the fact that we wouldn't be paying into Utah Retirement Systems. And so she was willing and actually volunteered to take a, a pay cut commensurate with that amount. But I, I just think that this is something that we should eat. And so I wanted to bring it before the council in a spirit of full transparency. And so that's where we are.
I agree.
I agree.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Well, then I guess that's everything on that, Chris. What's that?
I'm saying on us for not knowing.
We're a work in progress. Okay.
She's a keeper.
Yeah, she is.
Thank you. Okay, well, you're, you're done. Well, for a while.
No Christmas light gate?
Okay. The discussion of the per diem policy, item four, for wildland seasonal firefighters. Chief Ted.
Yeah, so this is a new policy that we want to just put in place. It's something we've been working on here. So we have our, our seasonal wildland firefighters that respond on fires nationally for us. And when they go out on fires, the reimbursement agency, which is generally the state, who reimburses us for their cost to go out and our vehicles. They have a, a certain per diem that they allow these firefighters per day. So we, we, we give that per diem to the firefighters. It's for their meals on travel days. They asked this year if they could cover their meals while they're traveling and then get the per diem reimbursement, which is very common in the industry. So we said, yes, you're welcome to do that. And then, and then. When we get approved by the state, we'll reimburse the per diem to you. And this way, if they don't spend all their per diem, they keep some of it. And, you know, we're probably talking very little money, but, but what the issue or what we ran into was that the state sometimes can sometimes take months to reimburse us. And in the meantime, they're sometimes carrying a credit card balance, earning interest on this to get reimbursed. So what we wanted to do is we want to put a policy in place to do two things. One, to allow us, or to allow them to be reimbursed the per diem at the per diem rate that we get reimbursed. So we're not losing any money. But secondly, this will allow us to reimburse them. And this is a question mark the council is welcome to weigh in on, reimburse them a certain percentage of that per diem money on their first paycheck when they return to the city. And then, and I think we have now listed fifty percent, and then we'll reimburse them the remaining fifty percent once we get approved by the state. Now, the reason we do that is we, or want to do it that way is because this gives them some money to pay off their credit cards. But then sometimes it takes us a few months to be able to work through the program to get the final per diem amount we're going to get reimbursed. So we really can't reimburse them the full amount till we know exactly what we're getting. And so we want to hang on to a portion of that. So then when it gets approved by the state, then we can reimburse them the remaining money. I know what that is. So I think we listed it at, if I remember right, it's fifty fifty.
I can't find fifty percent. I've been looking.
I don't remember putting a specific thing in there. I think it was up to the discretion of the chief.
Sounded, yeah, sounded like.
Is that the new, so I?
I mean, I prefer it not be fifty percent.
Yeah, either way, maybe we didn't put fifty in, maybe I.
Yeah, I.
Either did accept it, but we can go up to seventy five percent. I mean, there's got to be some, there's got to be held back till we know what the final amount is.
I just know, like, I work for a company and I would have to pay for stuff and it would take them two or three months to reimburse me. And, and it, sometimes it caused a financial hardship for me because I would go out and market and spend all this money on all these things and then, you know, wait several months to get five or six hundred dollars back.
Yeah. And we certainly don't want to do that because, I mean, these guys do a great job for us. They earn the city lots of money. And we want to treat them fairly. So this is why we want to put this policy in place.
So have we ever been denied reimbursement?
No.
Okay, so.
Will never be denied. It's just we don't know the final amount of reimbursement until it gets approved by the state. And sometimes that takes several iterations.
And but can we have a decent estimate, I guess, because I'm like Janet, I travel a lot for work and sometimes it's the reimbursement and sometimes it's upfront. And I prefer the upfront. Here, this is what we've allocated, we've estimated it's going to be, it's your first paycheck before, right when you leave, so you have the full amount. And then if it's different, if it's more, then we add it on at the end. You dislike the fifty percent?
Yeah, or seventy five. We can do seventy five, so we just hang on to twenty five. Usually the adjustment at the end is fairly small. We're pretty close, but knowing beforehand is a little tough because it depends on how they travel. Because it, and that's the reason why it takes us some time with the state to get this worked out when they get back, is because it changes state to state. So if they're traveling through multiple states, we sometimes don't know until they get back on their destination. So.
And we also don't know how long the deployment will be. Also, they could go out for a two week deployment, come back in three days.
Fourteen days, so we don't totally, so and the firefighters are okay putting it on there. They're okay paying upfront. They were just saying, hey, it'd be nice if we could get reimbursed at least a chunk of the money when they get back, so they're not covering, so they're not carrying it on.
They have a company credit card now.
And, and the, I mean, there's virtually no risk associated with this, right? I mean, we already have it locked in. We just.
That was my question, what, is there any risk?
There's no risk.
And we're already putting money ahead for their, for their pay as it is. So it's not like it's. It, it's there already. It's not like we're pulling money out that we, out of other budgets. It's already there.
We may, we, it looks like we don't, I mean, we don't have a percent here. So if you want to say a percent, or if you want to just say at the discretion of the city, or however you want to do it. I think reimbursing them seventy five percent is a good amount because that gives them enough to cover all their costs. And then the remaining twenty five percent is usually going to be more than enough to cover any adjustments we might have at the end.
And they're probably, if we only.
And we're talking, we're talking very minimal dollars.
We're not talking any, I mean, because in your line here, it says overpayment, but if we're going seventy five, there's not a very good chance we want an overpayment.
Yeah, and this is for travel days, when they're on the fire, the fire.
Pay for it.
So we're talking, you know.
Just driving, just getting there.
Yeah.
So do you want to limit it to the seventy?
Unless they're on a, unless they're on a staging.
I was gonna say.
They're on staging, then they, then they sometimes have to cover their own bills. But it depends on the call. Generally, if they're on a fire, the fire pays for them.
You want to lock in a seventy five percent? I mean, I.
I think that'd be a good amount, just so we have something, so it's a policy that we know, we can tell them.
Okay.
Then it's not, then it's, it's not an adjustment we have to worry about. And it's set.
Can we use the terminology up to seventy five percent or the verbiage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could do, yeah, up to seventy five percent. I think that this allows us to, something to let them know this is what we will do.
So right here, where I've got it kind of highlighted in blue, the Fire Chief Director Finance and Mayor may determine the issuing in advance of up to seventy five percent is appropriate. Is that where you'd suggest?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, it wouldn't be in advance. It would be a, an amount reimbursed to them on returning.
Oh, it's returning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we don't know, we don't know till they get done with their deployment, exactly how long they're going to be gone, how many days we have to reimburse them for.
But we could figure out a seventy five percent, and then once it's sent into the entity that's, that's repaying, then we would know if they need a little more or.
My, my suggestion is that we say, we'll reimburse up to seventy five percent on the first paycheck returning from the deployment.
Yeah, because it says two weeks, but.
Doesn't it say that on the post-fire date?
Yeah, it says within two weeks. So you want to say first paycheck?
First paycheck after deployment.
Okay.
Which will be within two weeks.
Which is usually paid within.
Because that check may come out the day after they get back, which wouldn't give us time to put it on there.
Okay, within two weeks.
Just say within two weeks because that lets us go into that next pay period.
Okay, do you have the language you need, Chris?
Hey, would you, would you accept a friendly, how about within the, within two pay cycles or something, just in case, just something happens with dates? So that would, that would be within four weeks potentially, but within two pay cycles, then we can get it done. Just a thought.
I'd say within three weeks and then.
Maybe three weeks, because if they're gone for two weeks and then they wait four weeks, now they're carrying a balance for six weeks.
And they're.
And they're, they're paying interest.
Okay, good. We can do that. Within three weeks. And then also, just as a reminder, per diem is not receivable. So we, per diem is what it is. We don't expect receipts back. So if these guys go out and they get two hundred dollars in per diem, and they decide to eat a burrito for breakfast and a burrito for dinner, and they pocket the rest, that's, that typically is not something we delve into.
Waiting multiplies seventy five percent on.
But well, it's per diem.
It's the rate. But you see, the per diem's changing, but you'll figure it out.
Our Utah per diem, our standard Utah per diem rate is seventy, is seventy, yeah, that, we know that.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can say that. And so the per diem, so here's generally what we, we, we do do.
As long as you know what to multiply on.
Yeah, so I, we get a resource order. We know where they're going. We can actually get in on a website and type in.
Okay.
What the amounts are for per diems for the various states they might be in. So we have a pretty good idea when they leave, what that per diem rate's going to be. We're just not locked in to say the final ten percent until we figure out exactly what their travel plan is. But, but we're usually pretty, can dial in pretty close.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Thank you. Uh, notice of vacancy on the city council. Jody, do we, do you mean to say anything beyond that, or do we just say there's a vacancy on the city council? Applications are accepted beginning.
Starting to be accepted and will be accepted through December eighth at one P M.
December eighth at one P M. Got that? Okay. All right. Any comments or questions on that? Okay. Department reports. Ted, come on back.
I thought that would be long.
That was a power move. I didn't want to see you pace.
Public Works, we have got, of course, the two phases of our road pavement management projects done. And phase three is now going out to bid. I think those bids are due December eighth, tenth, eleventh, somewhere right around there. So we'll have a good idea on what phase three is going to cost us. So we can get back to the bank and, and start locking that in to begin that next year, phase three. Which will be the remaining roads, except for those that need the water lines replaced. And I'm currently working on also a. Rate analysis to figure out what it would take to get these water lines and road projects done on that side. So stay tuned. Hopefully in the next couple of months, there's more information to come on that. I've got some idea, but I want to kind of get it fine tuned and have some more discussions with the state and people like that on available funding. So. The fireside, I don't, any, any questions on public works? On the fireside. We did receive a grant from FEMA for fifty six thousand dollars, plus we have to contribute twenty eight hundred. To buy six new SCBAs.
FEMA, huh?
From FEMA, yes. Called the Assistance to Firefighter Grants, which is a tough grant to get. So.
Nice.
Rarely.
These are radios, right?
What's that?
So the radios? Oh, the oxygen. Yes, 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 yeah.
So we did get awarded that grant. We got a quote from a supplier to, to provide the six SCBAs. I was going to come to the council tonight after a discussion we had with our leadership group last night with some, a, a request to consider. But I've got an update since that meeting last night as a fresh this, this evening. What had happened is during the government shutdown, the FEMA site went down. It was, it just wasn't being maintained. So I had no idea on how to get access to our grant. And we had the quote for the SCBAs under a promotional deal for fifty thousand eight hundred dollars. So less than our grant money. There would be a little bit of a risk if I ordered them under the promotional deal. I had no idea when we were going to actually get the grant money because the website shut down. So Ellen Curtis, who's our supplier, said that they would work with us and delay the invoice for a few months or something like that because they deal with AFG grants all the time. Worst case, if something happened, we'd have to figure out how to cover the cost until we could get reimbursed the grant. If worst, worst case, the grant just fell apart, then we would either have to front the money, or Ellen Curtis said they would work with it to try and sell them to another department, so we wouldn't have to keep them. So there was going to be some risk to that. However, update, the FEMA website came up late last night. And so I got onto today and we now can get access back to our grant. So I called the FEMA director, not the, the region director in Colorado. Spoke to him and he says, you're all good to go. Get, get your sales order with the delivery date. And when you're two weeks out, send that to us. We'll send you the money within a couple of weeks. And then you can pay the, pay for the, the SBs when they come in. So.
Awesome. So is there any out of pocket now then? Is that?
Twenty eight hundred.
Twenty eight hundred.
Twenty eight hundred was our contribution. One thing we can do though, too, when I talked to the FEMA guy is, so I got hold of the SCBA folks. Unfortunately, this, this, this quote they gave us was a couple of weeks old because it was before the shutdown. So he's got to go back now and make sure all the costs are still good because that was kind of in a promotional deal. If not, they may go up a little bit. I still think we're going to be under our grant allocation to get them. If it's different, we'll come back, but I think it's going to be under our grant allocation. As well as FEMA says, spend all the money we give you. So if it is, order some more PPE stuff. And we'll, you know, get that covered under our grant.
That's great. So how did we win the lottery? What was the, what's the trick?
Ted.
Yeah, you're even tied with FEMA, huh?
Yeah, I wore my short shorts that day when I went and visited.
Stocked.
You know. Unfortunately, a visual.
Same here with this cowboy boots. Levi's shorts, no, I told you. You guys with that visual. You know, scared of them. We're sorry. We don't want that back here. We better get money. It was just, it, it was just, I mean, I don't, I don't know what got worse this year, but this is probably the fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth year we've applied for this.
That's right. You have to keep applying.
Tenth or eleventh or twelfth. It's been one time.
Yeah, I did reduce the request amount this year from last year, just hopefully see if that would help. And maybe that was it.
Good job.
Yeah, no, that's great.
And these are being purchased under state contract, so the state's already pre-negotiated with Ellen Curtis. So all the, the three bids and all that, we do not have to, because it's a state contract.
Excellent. Okay, well, thank you.
Yep. Any questions for me? I don't think I have anything else.
All right, well.
As usual.
Yeah. And I, I think that that's actually it for you. We won't even summon you back.
Yes.
Yep. Well, maybe.
We'll figure something out.
That's, wait a minute.
Okay, Wade? No report? Okay, thank you. Mayor and city council reports. SECSD, we, we had our meeting. Nothing notable to speak of. And I do need to, I was thinking maybe you should come to the December board meeting so we can make introductions. And get you on that. MAG cog.
They're super nice. You'll like them.
They're a great bunch. I did not make my MAG cog meeting, so. And I feel great shame, but. That's that. Okay, Councilmember Hilliard?
Well, if it makes you feel any better.
Well, if it makes you feel any better, I was also invited to that MAGCog meeting and I also did not make it.
Well, you should be ashamed of yourself. You're supposed to have enthusiasm.
Didn't. Well, I had another obligation, unfortunately. Um, we've not met with the transfer station. I have not had a board meeting there, so nothing to report um, there, though, actually, I probably, so I was given another question yesterday by another resident asking about recycling. Um, because there is a rumor that has been going on for years that recycling in Utah is not a thing and that we just pay more and we take it and we send it all to the landfill. Um, I would like to, uh, let everybody know that that is not true. We are recycling. It all goes through its own compactor, so we're not even mixing compactors. Um, and we have just been granted, uh, the lowest contamination rate of the recycle coming to our transfer station than any other transfer station in Utah. So we've been working hard on that. And so, yes.
So keep those pizza boxes out of your recycling.
So pizza boxes, great question.
I've been throwing pizza, uh, no, I've never thrown pizza away.
They tell us with a pizza box, it has everything to do with the shake test. If you can shake the box and it doesn't make a sound, it can go in the recycle.
No kidding. All right. I haven't been paying attention.
Because of our volumes of cardboard, the grease is not compromising the recycling process.
Oh, good.
We, we have enough Amazon boxes that it.
Exactly.
Make sure that the, the food boxes are okay.
Yeah, it, it still keeps that number down.
Just remember the shake test and that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council member Hutchings.
Okay, so I, I missed both meetings, but I've been looking at agendas and things like that and one of them I've, I've lost. I can't pull it up on my phone. But, uh, so the South, South Utah Valley Municipal Water, um, we're basically losing like the majority of the voting board. Uh, this was their last.
Which one? The South Utah?
South Utah. Um, the attorney that's been with them for sixteen years is no longer with, uh, Payson. The technical committee, they're losing two because they're no longer with the cities that they were in. And, uh, so there's, you know, there, there's lots of people, there's going to be a lot of change here in the beginning of the year. Where we're going to have to vote on new board members. They had a presentation on block notices and, and, and water program updates. So Ted probably knows more about this than I do. You've probably seen the presentation. I don't understand a lot of it because I wasn't there to listen to it. Um, but we're just a teeny tiny part of, of this, this block notice, but there are going to be some repayments on this whole water system that are, that is coming down the line. And so there will be some additional costs on, on water, um, through this, this repayment period. And i- it's paid through, like, uh, Central Utah Water pays for the vast majority of it. And then then Central Utah Water, or not Central Utah Water, but South Utah Valley and that, that, that is, it covers a, a smaller portion of that. Thirty-four percent is paid by Central and then, and then it's broken up by the cities by, by different points. So there's probably going to be some, what I'm reading here is there's going to be some increased fees with Sumva, um, here in the future. But it's not, I think we've got a few more years before that's actually going to hit us. Ted?
Yeah, yeah, it's, so what they've got, they've got a, I was going to like, they've got a block of water. And under contract, they've allocated this block of water to various agencies, basically based on population. So because of our population, we're a small piece of this block of water. Central Utah's a big piece. Um, and then others, you have Spanish Forks, Salem, all South Utah cities are involved in this. We've got a small piece of this block of water. And this block of water has been allocated to the various communities. And when this water becomes available as part of the Central Utah project they're doing, um, then you have to start paying for this block of water until you pay it off. And it's so much per acre foot. Um, now you can defer payment, for example, for those that want to take the block of water and use it, they'll start paying for it as soon as it's available. You can defer payment for, for up to ten years. And if you don't need the water, you can defer that payment, which is probably what, I'm, I'll, I'll be coming to the city with more information on this. Uh, we meet as a, we meet as a technical committee, uh, with the group with Central Utah to, to reuse kind of stuff. Um, we can defer it up to ten years, which is probably what I'm going to recommend we do with the city here. And then even at that, you can actually also give, give back the block of water to make it develop to other cities that might need it if you're not going to use it type thing. So there are some options here, but if we want it, we can pay for it. Like Ryan says, ours is a small allocation.
Change one point two five percent.
So it's not that big, but we, they don't know finer, final amounts yet. Because it has to pay for project costs and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, right now, their estimated a fifty-year repayment is one, one hundred seventy-nine point seventy-four per acre feet. Of forty years, one ninety-eight point eighty-five per acre foot.
So if you defer it, you might pay a little more, but you also can defer it up to ten years. It really doesn't cost you a lot more, um, to do that. And then I'm retired, so.
Yeah.
That's the spirit.
Yeah, but, uh, there will be, there will be, they've been doing these presentations for a little while. They're nailing this down, so I'll be coming back probably this morning with a presentation council on this.
Okay.
Um, and I, I wish I could pull up the, for some reason, the mountain, the Mount Nebo is not pulling up. We got a new, so Kim from Payson City, does she retire?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we've got a new person and I am not finding their emails, so I could go through the agenda. Um, I don't know, I was looking at it today, um, but there are some, you know, wasn't, there wasn't a whole lot going on with, with Mount Nebo. Um, and I apologize, I thought I'd be able to pull it up on my phone, but did not get there, so.
You do what we can, bro. Okay, thank you. All right, uh, council member Kinniston.
You ready for the most important board meeting that goes on each month?
Dispatch.
Central man. They canceled my meeting, so.
Oh, wow.
The next one will be December.
Sounds like the best meeting ever.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay, thank you. Council member Lund?
Um, a couple things. So Ted, um, does the power in the roundabout, is it still, or is it working good? Like, you know how we've had some issues with that power box? Is it good?
I have heard complaints.
Well, you might hear one.
So.
One's coming right now.
We ordered some Christmas lights, different, something different. Um, and so we just want to make sure that we have good power. And then I could really use a helper. Can I borrow Toby?
Yeah, I said he's going to check power too. He loves helping.
Okay, just because, um, Sherry's going to be gone and I don't know who at my house will be around, but there are the bigger ones that are like the pre-lit ones that you set up and then they'll just be tree, they're not, we're not going to try and wrap the trees. It was really hard and really dangerous and you're hanging off a ladder and you're on the edge of the roundabout because the tree's overhanging and it just wasn't great.
And they all, because you come by.
Yeah, and people are speeding by and you think they're going to take out your ladder.
Ted's helicopter would handle that.
So we've got these tree, you know, the, the lights that you order. And I got in a little bit of trouble for that, but it's okay because it's done, it's a done deal now, so.
Yeah, we worked with Toby and he can help you and he knows I'm asking for everything.
Okay.
Checks the power.
And then, um, Saturday, December sixth, Santa Claus.
Fire, do you miss?
So what time do we want to start?
Uh, seems like we start at.
Ten, usually.
Ten.
Okay, let's plan to start at ten o'clock.
Do you want to start later?
Let's do, I think ten's good.
We don't usually do earlier just because it's cold.
Yeah, let's do ten and then we'll do the same stops like we usually do.
Okay.
Because that usually takes us a while to go.
New.
I have here the undergraded, the gone, it's about two o'clock.
Okay.
Morning, awesome, though. Because I know some years you've, we've, you've wanted us in some years.
Um, usually it's just the mayor. Um, cheer man.
That's you. No, I, I, I came for, when I was mayor-elect, I, I came, so.
I've come a lot of when I've been councilperson.
Can we get minutes on that? I, I don't.
We either need a mayor or a mayor-elect.
No, I, I think it's fun. I, I, I actually, uh, my granddaughter's going to.
What?
Stops maybe each one of the councilmen.
They're just riding the.
Because there wouldn't be enough room for riding them.
They, yeah. I mean, they, you can, I don't know. Honestly, a lot of the stops, there's three or four people there. Last year, we had so much candy leftover, we didn't, there wasn't great. We really want to do something different. I'm looking at some other options for the next year, but we'll do, just for short notice, we'll do this one more time. Um, and see kind of how the turnout is, but when we've done it and we've done our best to advertise it, there's just, there's just not a lot of kids.
But I think it's well-loved. I mean, I, I don't know if.
There's two or three stops that are very well, you know, represented, but then the other ones, there's just not a lot, so.
I mean, that might just be a reflection of the demographic too.
It might. Because like in our neighborhood, there's no kids anymore, so.
Could we put some, some signs?
Well, that's what I was going to ask is can we, we don't have banners for Santa. Can we do that? It's expensive though. But we only need one, right? Because our posts are gone. That's my other question. What are we doing about those? They're still laying over there. Can we go get them?
Oh, they're toast.
Those are toast? Okay.
Yeah, they're going to be thrown away. In fact, I think you already did.
Okay. So do we have another site, I guess, is?
Well, we talked about putting them, you know, right there on the corner because the, the property goes out to the, basically the trail. So we have to walk beyond the trail to the road. If we do on the other corner of Summit Creek, I think we can fit them there.
Okay.
We talked about putting some.
So.
It would be down right up about two hundred right in the corner.
Right by the church.
I think it's in front, maybe one's gone.
Up by the steak center.
Um, so would we, so would we order one banner or two? Maybe just one or?
One, because I'm not sure whether we'll get that post put in.
But everyone still gets there, well, maybe not everyone, but a lot of people, there's a lot of traffic even just for mail and so forth. I mean, it seems like that would get the word out well.
Okay. All right.
That's a siren day too, Ted.
Started with ho, ho, ho.
Nice.
Sirens.
Oh, it is because it's the first.
You know, I wonder. Well, we'll talk about that later.
Okay. Can, oh, can Santa do the siren test that day?
At ten A M. that day.
Ho, 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 ho.
I was thinking that.
Santa's on his way.
They want our announcement for announcement works.
The chief is doing a Christmas carol.
I like, I actually really like that.
Slow enough, I think people are hearing, hearing it.
Hope several last month, it, for some reason, it wasted the work, but it varies time to time what works. We still haven't figured it out.
Um, so just because I'm on this topic, but we talked about maybe, you know, the lights, the, the, the border of the city up here where the trees are, kind of around the parking lot, that upper edge, there's all, you know, we have trees. Is there any power anywhere along there? Any kind of power source?
Yeah.
Because we talked about, it might be kind of fun to have, um, just an idea, but to have families adopt a tree and decorate it, like bring the lights, donate it and decorate the tree. And then kind of have like, you know, you could, and it would, just sort of the ones around the city.
And we're not going to have the Andersons this year.
As long as it doesn't blow.
Displays.
Will there be power for that?
How, where would you put the power in?
There is, lining the.
Schoolhouse and.
Down that way.
With the hen stripe.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh.
He's always had all of his stuff up there. Going to miss it.
A little bit of cords.
We're talking about heat down here.
I can sit around. I'm talking about the outside of the.
Talking up to right underneath.
But would we have to put cords across the parking lot is the thing, if we're doing it on the outside?
Yeah, we're going to be able to do the outside.
That's my question. We can't do the outside.
We don't have any power up there.
Okay. We can just do the ones by the, so we, I, I mean, we could just get some lights and.
When we redo that road for, for water.
I would like to do something for the city building is what I'm saying, is I'd like to.
Rudder and Road, let's put in a little electrical line right there in front of the city center.
This week?
It's got a light here.
We get to remind me. Yeah.
Better not be. It's been on our listening time.
This had, had somebody suggest that and I thought that sounded kind of fun.
I don't think it's a bad idea if we can figure out how to get some power stuff.
Okay. Yeah, next year, something for next year.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
That's it, sorry.
All right, no, thank you. And council member Malkovich.
Um, yeah, for South Valley Animal Shelter, I sent you all an email um, from the executive director, just talking about how they utilize the stats um, from the animal shelter. Also, um, there's an Animal Control Officer Association conference in January. I'm not requesting to go, just so you know, I don't. Even though it's in St. George, I don't think that's something that we need to worry about.
You don't want to go kick the tires?
No, I think I'm good. Um, but I did want to just remind you also, um, as the legislative session is, is gearing up. Uh, yes, today and tomorrow are the last interim days before the session starts in January. Lot of talk is, this is going to be another pound for cities this year on legislation. And I just wanted to kind of highlight a couple of things. Um, there's a lot of talk about property tax and what it means to our city, what it doesn't mean. Are there changes? There's, might be caps or percentage. There's quite a few different bills out there. Um, hopefully, we've had, we will have our, um, both of our legislators here for our December meeting prior to the legislative session, so um, I can maybe put together a talking point list of things that we really want to cover, um, them going in. One is that we are a partnership, that we do not want them to, um, be preempting our local control over land use. Um, they've also been talking about, um, the gas tax and during, ending refinery, um, tax breaks, which would then lessen gas price, which is good for us as consumers, but that also means it lessens the amount of gas tax we get as a city for our roads. So it could greatly impact, um, the, the ability we have of the, of the money that we currently get from the state for our road funds. So that's something that's out there. They're doing quite a few things with water. And then, um, if any of you, um, a little while ago, I sent you a link about, um, giving your comments about the state housing plan feedback. They sent a letter to the governor today and hopefully it kind of capitalizes everybody's input that, that gave them on the plan. Um, then, and they're also moving that from the, the, um, Affordable Housing Agency to, uh, under more of the government operations of economic development. They're switching the, that over to that agency. And so I don't know what that will mean. They're going to be looking at development standards, um, infrastructure standards, um, ADUs, changing some ADUs. So there's a good chance come March, we're going to have to update quite a few of our ordinances, uh, to be in compliance. One of the things, don't worry about it yet, uh, Wayne, but they, last week, they changed, uh, all of the Title X, which is the land use that we, we just put in our ordinances, see Title X of the state code. Well, they didn't just change it to twenty, they also renumbered it in a different order. So you, the links are all broken right now. So if somebody is linking up to one of those, those, uh, Title X state standards, it doesn't work. Um, they're going to hopefully get that restored so that the links will work again. They want us, as we, um, as they update it and the code references, because we'll have to update our code to say, this is the new code, um, to make sure we're keeping track of all of the time staff puts in or planning commission puts in, um, because we want to give feedback to the state that these unfunded mandates actually cost us some money when it may not needed to have gone that way. Um, and then, um, just as a reminder, uh, the National League Summit is in Salt Lake this week. There I think three or four thousand people coming from all over the nation to this summit, and we have been invited to the Just Serve Devotional Wednesday night. You all had to RSVP for that. Hopefully you did and can go. And then the league is hosting, uh, a free event on Saturday night that you do need to RSVP for. It's a family night at the Museum of Illusion in Salt Lake. So if you'd like to go, make sure that you, um, RSVP. But that's it for now. And if there's anything that you hear about that you want me to be, um, advocating for, uh, with the league and or with the legislature, just let me know and I will do that.
Thank you.
Mayor, I found mine. If you're okay with me making, this is really interesting.
Oh, yeah.
So this comes from.
It better be.
Nebo Water. Um, so there's a, a Strawberry Valley project on conservation. Ted, you're probably, you probably have some familiarity with this. Um, so if, what I didn't know, Strawberry Valley Pro- Project, the SVP was, uh, originally organized in nineteen oh five. Um, and it was actually designated for water for agricultural use in the valley. Um, Spanish Fork and Payson contracted two thousand acre feet of water. Um, and used it for irrigation for a hundred and twenty years. Now it's, everything's changing over to municipality and industrial uses a vast majority. Um, and used it for irrigation for 120 years. Now it's, everything's changing over to municipality and industrial uses a vast majority of it. Um, 20 years ago, the Bureau of Reclamation worked with Strawberry U- Water Users Association. Um, and set up a WDA or Water Dec- uh, Dedication Agreement, um, that has been. Some, there's been some controversy over the last 20 years. Um, so they've actually put a permanent solution together and signed a permanent solution. Um, it's actually called the 1920 Miscellaneous Act. Um, that, that they put together and signed on Sep- in September. Um, and, uh, it actually converts 61,000 acre feet of Strawberry Project water from agricultural to municipal and industrial. Um, and so there's a lot of history that has gone into this. I won't go bore you with all the rest of the details, but. This is something that has been recently put together to try to clear up some of the, the issues with strawberry water users and the strawberry. Uh, the, the SVA, the Strawberry Valley Project, or SVP, the Strawberry Valley Project. And then the Bureau of Reclamation and everything else trying to get this all put together. And this is recently done. And, and presented and signed into, uh, and, and to act it, or into, into law. And part of that is the. Uh, I talked about the tracking that they're doing with all the water usage throughout the whole valley and, and it's now. A, uh, is the, the model that the whole state is going to be following. Um, and, and we are on the cusp of this and, and, and the very beginning of it. Ted, if they haven't asked you, they're looking for monthly, um, reports on water usages.
Yeah.
With the audit.
And, uh, this is, this is a little bit different. This is a, 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 a usage thing that they're doing. Um, and put a lot of money and, and effort into this as part of this whole. You know, resolving these issues from the early 1900s that have, have, uh, been, been going for a long time. So. So a lot of that has been now, now put together and they're including this, uh, you know, the whole water project and the treatment plant that's being put in down the street. And, and all those other things together into this, this new over, overarching thing, because we've gone from agricultural to municipal and industrial more than, than before. So. Um, it really affects our, our neighboring communities more than us, but we don't have a whole lot of our agricultural, but we're not using that water.
What did they call that? Did you say something 1920?
It's the 1920, let's see, 1920 Act, uh, let's see. The one 1920 Act contract. I think is what it's called. Um, so it's actually not a law. It's, it's actually a contract with a whole bunch of, a bunch of users. Um, and, and again, like I said, it's, it's set up for. Over 60,000 acre feet of water out of strawberry, uh, for usage in, um. And, and it goes to our, so it's our, our surface water and we're tracking surface water and we're tracking aquifer water. There's, there's two different things that they're tracking. We're a hundred percent aquifer here. There are other cities that are, that are using both. Um, so it has less of an impact for Woodland Hills, but it's, it's good information to know that we're actually a, you know, a part of that. And we're, we're in that and part of that whole thing that is being copied throughout the state of Utah.
And it's comforting to know that they're carefully tracking those things.
Carefully, yeah, now they are. They're, they're really being much better about it. Um, so it's, it's a good thing.
Okay.
Sorry for that.
No, uh, that was, that was interesting. Okay. Uh, any items for upcoming city council meetings?
Just the one of, of having our legislators come in December. No, you told me you were going to, so I didn't.
I never heard back from them.
Okay, I'll, I will, uh, contact them.
We have to say goodbye.
Yeah.
Yeah. We should have a dinner.
So we've got a pretty jam packed agenda starting on that night.
What night are we meeting again?
I know it'll be December 9th.
December 9th. I just wanna put it on here.
We have a trail presentation with Jeremy Searle that night as well.
Um, I would appreciate, and I'm guessing it comes from the mayor, a. What's, how are, how are we gonna handle that meeting? How are we going to, I mean, I would like to have the information from our different candidates that do apply. And then how are we gonna handle that? Is it gonna be a one question from each? Is it gonna be, you know, I would, I would like to know.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be, you don't have to tell me now, but.
No, we, we talked about it some. I mean, I, I, I definitely think that it, it, I mean, and it depends.
We did it before.
Right.
Yeah, we've done it a few times.
And I just, I think that the key is going to be, I mean, I, it, it, it's, it's something that is. In some respects comparable to a meet the candidates event, but I also think that, uh, and Jody and I, we talked about making sure that. You at least have the applicant information that you can reach out and ask them any questions in advance too, so that it's not just something where you're limited to, you know. Three minute.
We'll just have 24 hours basically, cause we'll get it af- that afternoon of the eighth.
Well, so be ready.
Again, I, I, I'm hoping that we could get them as they come in. And if someone puts it in that afternoon, then we don't get a chance.
No, that's a really good suggestion.
But I would prefer to have it.
Okay.
Cause I, I spent a long time out of town. I mean, I'd be home for a little bit, but I would like to have that so I can have those conversations.
And no offense to the one person who's here, but I mean, I, I hope we have a few choices. Like before, you know, we, we had, how many, we had?
Three.
Three or four last time?
Look what we got stuck with.
I know.
I know.
Just joking.
Then you guys really butchered.
But, but I think it was good because, um, and I mean, Ben knows, cause I told him about, uh, my neighbor, we, you know, we were all real excited about him until. Because you, there's lots of questions you ask, but he wasn't willing to serve on any of the committees. And so people like me, I was thinking, well, that means I have to do more.
I was gonna say, I couldn't handle any more.
Yeah, that means I have more assignments if you won't do any. And so, I mean, I just, you just never know. And so I think it's just good to have choices because. Uh, I think a lot of people don't understand what's required.
Yeah.
Until those questions come up.
It's, it's certainly circulating in social media and I, I know there are a few people that have at least indicated.
I've had a few calls from people who are interested.
So, yeah, I just, I just know that last time it was good to have choices.
Oh, I agree. Ben, I really feel bad that I said, look what we got stuck with. I didn't mean that at all.
I don't feel bad at all.
I've been yelling at enough of them in the last four years. I can take it something like that. We're good.
Yeah, only a friend would be able to say that.
We like to, we like to tease up here. It's all good.
But Jody, I think that is a, a great suggestion. So as you get applicants, can you forward those along to the council?
Thank you so much.
All right.
And then that'll give us an idea of how many we're looking at too.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, uh, then, and, and I, wait, you saw, we do have January 6th where there's the change of the guard. So.
True. That's true.
Yeah, and maybe a riot.
Have a party on that day.
You know, on January 6th.
Did you say a riot?
Yeah, I'm thinking someone needs to stick up for the city center.
I hope so.
Yeah.
I think we can arrange that. Doral, Doral, we got that?
But I, I would like to at least have, I, 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 I mean, this is such a busy time of year. I think that a dinner would be awesome, but it is going to be difficult with everyone's schedules.
Yeah, I think that would be hard. It'd be fun, but.
Yeah, no, uh. Let, let's think it over. Uh, we'll, we'll give it some.
Having a dinner even just that night, how we sometimes have a little.
Yeah, can we order something on?
I, I think, I think that would be nice. Yeah. Okay. Jody, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have, um, where, where, what was the, what's the, the Foundry? We're gonna have the Foundry Grill, uh, cater. The, uh, it's January 6th, city.
It's not that good right now. Can we go to the bar and still?
Okay.
Exactly. I was just gonna say the exact same thing. Same thing.
I thought she said go to the bar. Yeah.
But I, I think that, that, that's a good idea. So we'll, we'll think of something and, and try to make sure that we get something together. All right. Let's, uh, reconvene at 7:45 and, uh, call the, uh, council meeting to order.
I've got a few.
Okay. We call tonight's city council meeting to order and begin. Councilmember Lund, if you would offer an invocation and Councilmember Kennison, if you would please lead us in the pledge.
Our dear kind of gracious heavenly father, we're so grateful that we could meet here tonight as council, mayor, and city employees and citizens to. Discuss some of the topics that concern our city and to help us make good decisions and to choose things that will be best for our community and help us to. Be guided as we make policy and look at the budget and think about activities and things for our citizens that we will do what will be best for all of them. Help us to be mindful of the needs of our citizens. And we are so grateful for this opportunity that we've had to serve and. For those of us that were able to get reelected, we're grateful for the opportunity to go forward and we're so grateful for. Everyone and their input. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Going to rise and repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. The public comment portion of our meeting is underway. Are you here?
Of course.
Okay, well.
You've missed the last.
Yeah. That's exaggerated. I was online last one.
Of my comment.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, uh, hey.
Let him have it.
Diana Second here as usual. I just want to have it on record one more time that. Our practice that has really, um, been utilized quite often recently in rezoning a property. Because a homeowner or a homeowner, because they're selling to developer wants to create a project. And have smaller property. Out of their larger properties so that they can make more money is out of line with our general plan. And I know that we are in the prac- in the process of redoing our general plan. But it is still a general plan that we are. By law supposed to use as our guide in everything that we do as a city. Um, maintaining the rural aspect, um, having trees be borders be, I mean, these are. These are not quotes from the general plan, but I've read it so many times that this is what I come up with. Trees between homes. So that you have the forest between, not only for the beauty of living on the mountain in the city of Woodland Hills, but also. Um, fire protection, because the biggest thing that. Will be a problem with fire is our home with all this synth- synthetic fuel that we now have. It's weird, but the trees are actually a fire break. I'm sorry. It's weird. That's, you know, if you have your clearance between you and the trees, but you then have trees between you and the next clearance in their home. It keeps us safer. Those are just some of the pieces. I would like to ask that as we continue, cause I don't suspect we're gonna change this practice. As we continue to. View these proposals of zone changes and property use, um, differences. That we consider the. The impact of having animal rights, non-animals, animal rights, non-owners. Yes, it is a civil matter. Yes, it will bring discord. It is differences. And is that, I know it's up to the citizens eventually. But are we as a city wanting to create an environment that is gonna promote? Discord. I think that that is something we need to ponder in our decisions. And then something that I've brought up, but it has never been addressed. We recently have in our two area. A parcel of land, just over two acres was R1 dash two. Is that how it's said? R2 dash one. One home on two acres. That was split up into a smaller piece. It is R19 and then we have R1 and then R2, R2. But this setbacks from the street, we are, we did talk about the sides. The street setback's not the same. How is that gonna be addressed? Because I think it should be uniform along the street or else we're gonna have. A difference that does not maintain the uniformity through town, which is what the general plan refers to. I just think there are things that we're not quite, we're not looking wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else?
I wanna address the council about dark skies, night skies.
Hey, you better state your name.
Oh, Jody Stones. And I'm gonna talk about, and it was mentioned that. How things are worded and architectural and that we need to be careful when we take something to the attorney and how we say it. But I wanna also say that when you looked at the survey and you pull up pages 19 and 20, those questions were very leading. In, do you want dark skies? Are you willing to have new builds with dark sky compliant fixtures? It doesn't say anything about our existing homes. And so as you're beginning to look at dark skies or consider night skies, whichever one you are. I, I appreciate Councilmember Hutchings' comment because some homes have 10 or 15 lights on the outside. And if you have to go. Change all those and bring an electrician in, you could have some of these, um, widowers in the city that are gonna have to spend $2,500 to $3,000 to all of a sudden and replace some lights. That are perfectly good, but the sides on them may not be covered. And also I am against turning off the lights here at this building or at the mailboxes.
I agree with that.
Uh, we've got fire, we've got EMS, we've got snowplow people that come here during all hours and it's gotta be safe for them. We had an individual fall last year on the ice and, um, he can't plow this year because of his injury. So you know what? We don't want a lawsuit. So I would encourage the council to allow the lights here at the building and at the, um, mailboxes to stay on. That's it.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else?
Monica?
Without thoughts, but I'm not gonna share them.
They're, they're private comments, not public comments.
Whisper.
Tell me later, Monica. Tell me later.
Whisper into the speaker. Sorry. I, I didn't mean to start that.
Yeah, if she's gonna show up.
Mike, have any comments?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, then we will close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda. Item 14. Approval of September 23rd and October 14th, 2025, city council meeting minutes.
Okay, so can we have some, some, well, I, I'm, I'm willing to. Make a motion to approve with one. Um, September 23rd, meeting minutes. Section, um, where we're talking about the, the new water tank that, uh, Three Bridges is willing to build.
Okay.
There's a, there's a section here where, uh, says Mr. Mickelson added the tank would actually become part of Salem City's infrastructure and not Woodland Hills. That's not correct. That's the other way around. And Woodland Hills would operate and maintain it. And that we would inspect the tank. So that's the only thing that jumped out.
Change is that?
Which what?
Never. I can find it.
Okay, I apologize. I just took a picture of it instead of printing it all out.
I can do that.
I'll be to help you find it if you need it.
Thank you for reading carefully.
Yeah, I kinda see it.
I scan and, and it was just something, as I'm scanning, if, if something jumps out, I, then I go more detail. So Ted was saying the same thing when I called him up today. I'm like, I don't read it verbatim, but I try to scan it and make sure it's what my head had it.
Cause I kinda scanned it, but I, I must, well, cause you know what it's supposed to say. So you kind of.
Yes.
You kind of fill in yourself. Your brain fills it in.
Okay, so with that correction.
I made a motion.
You made a motion.
Page four, second paragraph, page four.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Lek.
Okay, so do we have a second on, uh?
I'll make a sec. I'll second it.
Okay, second by Councilmember Lund. All in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? Hey, that motion carries. On 15. Decision on forwarding request for a zone or a change in zoning from R1 to R119 for property owned by Underwood. At 350 South Woodland Hills Drive, serial number 550520044, consisting of 5.7861 acres.
Mayor?
Yes.
The motion should be referral to the planning commission.
Yeah, it, it, forwarding request, but, uh, yeah, no, that's a good clarification. Thank you. Yeah, it, it, forwarding request, but yeah, no, that's a good clarification, thank you.
I'd be happy to make that motion to send it to the Planning Commission.
Okay, so that's a motion by Councilmember Hilliard.
A second.
Do we get a vote again when it comes back?
Yes.
Okay.
Joining always.
Okay, and a second by Councilmember Malkovich, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And, and I appreciate you expressing thanks in your prayer. Congratulations to Ben and Janet on their reelection, or well, reelection for Janet, election to a new position for Ben.
Ben's, he jumps around.
Yeah. And Mike, I appreciate throwing your hat, and that's not an easy thing to do, so thanks for, thanks for doing that.
Should we, I mean, it doesn't matter, but, because it didn't change the result, but the numbers did change slightly, do you want to just, for public record, so they know what the actual final was? I don't know.
Yeah, does anybody have any questions about the documents? No, thank you.
The certificate wasn't that kind of nice, I'm like.
Yeah, that's a nice thing.
I like it.
That's the way to go.
We haven't had those before.
I know, I like it, I'm like.
Last time, and that was about, yeah, just the last.
I don't remember getting one.
But it's required.
I don't think we got one.
We think it's a, it's a nice thing.
It's just a nice little keepsake.
Okay, so I.
I can do one for you, Doral.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put that on my.
So, if you don't have any questions, it did, there was some ballots that were able to be cured and verified of signatures, and so that did change the count a little bit.
Same result.
Same result.
I don't know, do, can I read them, or do we care? Just Roger Fuller, 181, Ben Hilliard, 455. Steve Johns, 359, Michael Myers, 342, Janet Love, 437. So, it's kind of interesting that, like, for mayor, 636 total votes, but it doesn't double for council, and I know you said some people only.
Some people only vote for, well, no, but some people will only vote for one of the.
Well, she said there were people she talked to that only voted for mayor.
Yeah, there was some who didn't feel comfortable voting for council.
Because they have two friends.
They're right.
Feel comfortable, I actually had a couple of people come in and, and I, you know, said, well, you can go look at their bios and, and offered them to be able to read them on the Utah election site, but you don't want to. There was confusion this year though about having to put those four digits. And, but there was no space for the four digits. So, that rule actually did not go into effect this year. So, if your ballot didn't have the four digits, don't worry. It was still counted as long as your signature matched and you were a resident of the city. I mean, you do always have some that, who are not residents or who are voting in two communities, and they can't do that. Not only vote in one, we're not going to vote. And then, if for some reason they couldn't process your ballot, the county made six attempts to get ahold of those individuals. They texted them, they emailed them, they called them, they sent them a letter.
And there was what, 10 that weren't cured, right?
Yeah, and we did compare some of those 10 that were cured to check if a couple in our utility base with the numbers being correct. And they're the same numbers we have. So, they made every effort to try and get ahold of everyone to make sure they're.
I mean, they got nine fixed, which was good.
I was impressed with the turnout. 54% of the city voted. I don't think we've had that.
One of the highest in the county, well, Orem had a high count too, but.
Had a high count a couple of years ago, but this is one of the higher ones. Orem and really high turnout this last.
Yeah, very contentious families.
And there was a new town formed too, south of us, past Spring Lake.
Spring Lake.
Really?
Yep.
Who got the mayor, was it Menlo?
He ran uncontested.
Oh, he ran uncontested?
Yeah, I think it was Mark.
I mean, there's like 20 people in that town, but I love that. I love Spring Lake and I knew all the people. Bob is a good friend, that, I need to, I need to message him.
Yeah, so it's kind of neat to see a new.
That's cool. He's like renovating that old school. It's really cool.
Okay, well, this is your last chance, thanks, Jody. This is your last chance to kill this through votes.
I will make a motion that we, we, I don't know if approve is the right word, but we adopt the resolution of 2025-23, canvas of the 2025 municipal election as presented to us.
Okay, so that's a motion by Councilmember Malkovich.
You want this one?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Kinnison, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Oh. And you still lose and win. All right, well, now it's official, congratulations. Okay, 17, Resolution 2025-24, approving the September 2025 check dispersments.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025, 20, 20, yeah. How does that work? Resolution 25, September 2025.
What are you reading here?
Okay.
It's been a long day.
A cryptic motion by Councilmember Hilliard.
I'll cryptically second it.
Cryptic second by Councilmember Hutchings, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And lastly, the policy and procedures, 2025-03, per diem, policy for wildland season five.
I'll make a motion that we approve that.
Up here, does it change?
Yeah, it's changed.
Okay.
Up to 75% reimbursement, and that gives us a cushion in case there's a little bit of a difference.
Three weeks, I like that. Thank you for that change.
Okay, so.
Three weeks.
Councilmember Lund, second by Councilmember Kinnison, all in favor?
Aye.
Some opposed?
Okay, there is a legal update, so I, I believe that it is worthwhile to enter into a closed session to discuss that, so we can get a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Lund.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Hutchings, Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Councilmember Kinnison?
Yes.
Councilmember Lund?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Malkovich?
Yes.
Okay, well, we are about to enter closed session, thanks for those of you who.
A few times.
Okay, we are back and ready to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn by Councilmember Malkovich.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Kinnison, we're adjourned. See you guys. See you later.